This meeting is in hand with the ordinance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6, and set, those of which were sent to the record in the Scarlet Journal was posted on the Western Post.
Thank you, roll call please.
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
Everybody please rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, as a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we do have some proclamations, some presentator proclamations for this evening.
And is that my work? Yeah, do you want, do you want to do the Fourth of July ones first, or do you want to do the second one, park and recreation month first?
The Fourth of July month first.
All right. This is the first one.
This one here?
Mm-hmm.
All right. This is Horn Rock Properties.
Yes.
So, please have the representatives from Horn Rock Properties come up, please.
Just the flag. Just the flag.
There's the flag, please.
Here, go, leave the flag.
Oh, okay.
And then this is the proclamation.
So, can you hear me? Thank you. So, as you know, we're bringing back Fourth of July celebrations. This year has been gone for two years, uh, through the obvious reasons, it's a pandemic, and, uh, you know, Hackensack fireworks have been a long, ongoing tradition in the city of Hackensack for years and years, and people come from all over here and far, and, uh, we're finally having it back again this year, and it's going to be a great show, we're looking forward to it. But, uh, you know, we had to, like, kind of start over and go out and get new sponsors because the two years, you lose a few, and we had some great people step up, uh, to become our platinum sponsor, and that's Horn Rock Properties, all right? They're doing the lot scene development, among other things, I believe. So, from the city of Hackensack, it's the 2022 Platinum Sponsor, City of Hackensack, New Jersey, presented to Horn Rock Ivy and Green, uh, Horn Rock Properties and Ivy and Green Hackensack, with sincere appreciation for your generous support of our community and Fourth of July fireworks display. So, this means a lot to us guys, because, you know, when you get hit like we did here, you miss something like that for two years, it's, uh, it's tough to make it up, and you guys certainly helped to step up to the plate, so thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, thanks. So, yeah, so may we take a picture? Thanks again. Thank you.
Senator Mary, there was no one here, should.
No one's here except.
Not as far as I know, unless somebody came, but I didn't know.
Anybody here from Sanzare Enterprises? No? Well, as you know, Alfred Sanzare has been a long time Hackensack family, been around forever and ever, and they have, uh, put quite a bit of money in Hackensack, they have that, uh, as soon as you come on Main Street, there's their beautiful complex on the left, among other properties in the city. They've always, always stepped up to help the city of Hackensack financially, whether it's sponsoring the Fourth of July, or whatever it is, they're, they're a great family. A matter of fact, uh, where once a little bank stood on the corner of Essex and, uh, Maine, which used to flood all the time, they took that property, knocked it down, and built a beautiful park in their parents' memory, and if you've ever been down there, it's really an outstanding little park, it's the first thing you see when you go up New Jersey, and so it's a beautiful thing. So, this is from the city of Hackensack, gold sponsors, presented to Alfred Sanzare Enterprises, with sincere appreciation for your generous support of our community and our Fourth of July fireworks celebration, so we'll make sure they get that.
And the next is proclamation for concern, she's here, which is, I think, Lisa?
Lisa's here. Hi, Lisa. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So, this reads, proclamation from the office of the mayor of the city of Hackensack, whereas the Insera family might be a family business serving families in providing the highest products at the most reasonable prices, including a variety of delicious prepared foods, soups, a cafe catering department, and a large selection of produce, including organic and farm-to-table locally grown from New Jersey farms. And whereas the Insera family has been a member of the Hackensack community since 1995, when they began working on the store at 500 South River Street. And whereas on November 1st, 1997, members of the community and local residents celebrated the grand opening of the family-owned and operated shop in Hackensack. And whereas the company remains true to the mission established by the late, born Insera, to always lend a helping hand to those in need. And whereas Insera supermarkets proudly support Hackensack food pantries, our hospitals, area hospitals, public and private schools, churches, temples, local chapters of Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, cultural and recreational events, youth sports teams, police and fire departments, and veterans. And I can tell you, just from experience dealing with the Inseras, I mean, they always step up to the plate no matter what it is, whenever the city sports programs, anybody goes to the Insera, uh, folks, they're more than happy to help them out, and, you know, that's part of the, the great community, and we appreciate being part of our community. So, whereas the city of Hackensack is very grateful for Insera supermarkets, generosity and ongoing support of this initiative, and the overall revitalization of our city. Now, therefore, I, John P. DeBros, Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the Hackensack City Council, acknowledge and thank Insera supermarkets for their $5,000 donation to the city's Fourth of July celebration, and your ongoing commitment to the well-being of future of our great city. Thank you so much. Thank you.
No one's here except. Not as far as I know, unless somebody came, but I didn't know.
Anybody here from Sanzare Enterprises? No? Well, as you know, Alfred Sanzare has been a long time Hackensack family, been around forever and ever, and they have, uh, put quite a bit of money in Hackensack, they have that, uh, as soon as you come on Main Street, there's their beautiful complex on the left, among other properties in the city. They've always, always stepped up to help the city of Hackensack financially, whether it's sponsoring the Fourth of July, or whatever it is, they're, they're a great family. A matter of fact, uh, where once a little bank stood on the corner of Essex and, uh, Maine, which used to flood all the time, they took that property, knocked it down, and built a beautiful park in their parents' memory, and if you've ever been down there, it's really an outstanding little park, it's the first thing you see when you go up New Jersey, and so it's a beautiful thing. So, this is from the city of Hackensack, gold sponsors, presented to Alfred Sanzare Enterprises, with sincere appreciation for your generous support of our community and our Fourth of July fireworks celebration, so we'll make sure they get that.
And the next is proclamation for concern, she's here, which is, I think, Lisa?
Lisa's here. Hi, Lisa. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So, this reads, proclamation from the office of the mayor of the city of Hackensack, whereas the Insera family might be a family business serving families in providing the highest products at the most reasonable prices, including a variety of delicious prepared foods, soups, a cafe catering department, and a large selection of produce, including organic and farm-to-table locally grown from New Jersey farms. And whereas the Insera family has been a member of the Hackensack community since 1995, when they began working on the store at 500 South River Street. And whereas on November 1st, 1997, members of the community and local residents celebrated the grand opening of the family-owned and operated shop in Hackensack. And whereas the company remains true to the mission established by the late, born Insera, to always lend a helping hand to those in need. And whereas Insera supermarkets proudly support Hackensack food pantries, our hospitals, area hospitals, public and private schools, churches, temples, local chapters of Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, cultural and recreational events, youth sports teams, police and fire departments, and veterans. And I can tell you, just from experience dealing with the Inseras, I mean, they always step up to the plate no matter what it is, whenever the city sports programs, anybody goes to the Insera, uh, folks, they're more than happy to help them out, and, you know, that's part of the, the great community, and we appreciate being part of our community. So, whereas the city of Hackensack is very grateful for Insera supermarkets, generosity and ongoing support of this initiative, and the overall revitalization of our city. Now, therefore, I, John P. DeBros, Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of this council, acknowledge and thank Insera engineering associates for their $5,000 donation to the city's Fourth of July celebration, and their ongoing commitment to the well-being and future of our great city. Greg, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I can't get back in further.
Thanks. That's a perfect. And Hackensack, we're reading last.
It was just the way.
Sorry, Ellen.
It was the way I got them.
My boss is a saint of the bad, he's going to say it all. Erin, how are you?
Good, good. How about yourself?
Good, good. So, Erin, uh, as you know, you see Erin give reports on our, uh, a lot of the engineering stuff with the stormwater and, uh, our CSO issues with our, our sewers, um, she's here on a regular basis, but she works for a suburban consulting engineering firm, uh, which is a large engineering firm in the state of New Jersey. They've been doing a lot of the work, the installer work, on sewer separation and stormwater control in the city of Hackensack, so we've been working there, and along with all the work on Main Street. So, this proclamation reads, whereas suburban consulting engineers, SCE, a woman-owned, multi-disciplined engineered, engineering, geo, spatial, land-serving, and landscape architecture firm dedicated to creating solutions for client success by delivering innovative and practical professional services. And whereas the city of Hackensack has utilized SCE's expertise and experience in improving infrastructure, park systems, and facilities for our residents. And whereas SCE's knowledge and capabilities have resulted in the city receiving millions of dollars in grants. And whereas SCE is always available with their prompt response, sound answers to your questions, and long-term continuity with the individual in charge. And now, therefore, I, John P. DeBros, Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, that's what I'm saying, along with members of the Hackensack City Council, acknowledge and thank suburban consulting engineers for their generous donation of $5,000 for the city's Fourth of July celebration, and their ongoing commitment to the well-being and future of our great city. So, thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, Mr. Schell. Yes, to for a picture, watch your head. It's a tree. So, this proclamation reads, Adomel is the head of, uh, well, he's the vice president now at Hackensack University Medical Center, where I also work. When I first started there, you were, uh, still in the construction, you run all the new construction. Actually, your official title, vice president, is?
Regional vice president of Facilities and Capital Construction.
Facilities and capital construction, and you can see they're doing quite a bit over there. So, this proclamation reads, whereas Hackensack University Medical Center, founded in 1888 as the county's first hospital, is now part of the largest networks in the state comprised of 36,000 team members and more than 7,000 physicians, known as Hackensack Meridian Health Network. And whereas Hackensack Meridian Health is the largest provider of inpatient and outpatient services in the state of New Jersey, with 17 hospitals from Bergen to Ocean Counties, including four academic, academic medical centers, two children hospitals, nine community hospitals, a behavioral health hospital, and two rehab hospitals. And whereas the hospital is created an entire campus of award-winning care, and is a hometown hospital for the New York Giants and the New York Red Bulls, and providing to the Northern Trust PGA golf tournament. Whereas Hackensack Hospital remains committed to its community through fundraising and community events, especially the Tackle Kids Cancer Campaign, providing research at the Children's Cancer Institute, Alice at the Joseph M. Sanzare Children's Hospital. Now, therefore, I, John P. DeBros, Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the city council, acknowledge and thank Hackensack Meridian Health, Hackensack University Medical Center, for their $5,000 donation to the city's Fourth of July celebration, and their ongoing commitment to the well-being and future of our great city. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. On three, one, two, thanks so much. Thanks. Appreciate it.
You have the other one there.
Actually, my, uh, thank you. You've got a little copy of the other property.
I have a pair.
Okay, so there is one more proclamation to read, and it's, whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition, services, and education activities that are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increase a community's economic prosperity, it will increase property values, increase tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, recreate outdoors, so. Whereas the city of Hackensack recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now, therefore, I, John P. DeBros, Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the city council, do hereby recognize Park and Recreation Month of July. So, thank you for that. Okay. So, we're going to move on, and need an approval of the minutes to the Cal and Executive Session of June 14th, 2022. Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
And with that, we'll go right to the city manager's report, please.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, number one, the city will be hosting, of course, our Fourth of July celebration, to include fireworks by Grucci, along with a summer concert series. Thank you to all of our 2022 sponsors, which we just, uh, acknowledged, especially our platinum sponsors, which were Horn Rock Properties, as you just saw, and Alfred Sanzare Enterprises. The Hack Pack is launching a series of summer events at the Atlantic Street Park, to include a Friday night mini concerts, sunset yoga, and movies under the stars. The city is celebrating its 20th anniversary of Shakespeare in the Park. Be sure to check out our upcoming schedule at the Atlantic Street Park. The Hello Box Project initiated by Hackensack Elks Little Libraries has been fully implemented. We currently have 25 boxes installed throughout the city to encourage summer reading opportunities for our children. All of our splash parks are now open seven days a week due to the summer timeframe from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Please don't forget to log into your airport noise complaint, so we remain on task to resolve this ongoing issue with the T2B flight path. Some updates on some complaints and, uh, issues we had at the last meeting. Bergen County Transit Bus Stop has been removed from Atlantic Street and relocated onto Prospect Avenue near the main entrance of HUM City. Double parking on Atlantic Street continues to be an issue and is being monitored by the PD regularly. Uh, the Margaret Avenue complaint was inspected, and the potholes were repaired on the walkway by our DPW. The fence was inspected, and though it is rather old, it is not in need of repair at this time. We will look to replace the fence or paint it, uh, when the budget allows. Commercial vehicles will be monitored in the area, and there were, uh, several summonses issued as a result of this complaint by the police. The Environmental Commission recently requested confirmation that our city ordinances are addressing responsible behaviors of pet owners. Uh, Susan McVeigh, our health officer, has confirmed that abandonment, sterilization, identification, and roaming pets are all addressed properly in our city ordinances. That's all I have, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ready, Dan?
I'm ready.
Okay, resolution 294-22.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 31-2022, an ordinance to amend chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic, to add a new handicap parking space in section 49.2, parking for the handicapped. This ordinance has been advertised according to law, now calls for a public hearing.
Can you get a motion open to the public?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Anybody would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right.
It is resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 31-2022 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 295-22.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 32-2022, an ordinance to amend chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic, to update speed women on certain portions of First Street in section 170-67. This ordinance has been advertised according to law, now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
Motion to adopt the ordinance, please.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right.
It is resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 33-2022 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 297-22.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 34-2022. A bond ordinance providing for phase two of the Clay Street and Anderson Drainage Area Combined Sewer Separation Project, by in in the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, the state of New Jersey, appropriating $13,500,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $13,500,000 bonds or notes to finance the plus thereof.
$13 million, correct?
$13 million, I'm sorry. I thought I said thousand, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, you did once, I think. Need a motion to introduce the ordinance, please.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Anybody would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right.
It is resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 31-2022 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 295-22.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 32-2022, a capital ordinance of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for certain capital improvements and acquisitions in appropriate $1,250,000, and providing that such sums so appropriated shall be raised from the reserve for sale of municipal assets from the current fund of the city of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised according to law, now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Over.
Give a second.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right.
Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right.
It is resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 32-2022 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 296-22.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 33-2022, an ordinance to amend chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic, to update speed women on certain portions of First Street in section 170-67. This ordinance has been advertised according to law, now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance in this ordinance only, please come forward. Saying no one from the public, motion to close.
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right.
It is resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County, Bergen, the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 33-2022 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 297-22.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 34-2022. A bond ordinance providing for phase two of the Clay Street and Anderson Drainage Area Combined Sewer Separation Project, by in in the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, the state of New Jersey, appropriating $13,500,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $13,500,000 bonds or notes to finance the plus thereof.
$13 million, correct?
$13 million, I'm sorry. I thought I said thousand, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, you did once, I think. Need a motion to introduce the ordinance, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right.
It is resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 34-2022 as introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance should be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on July 18th, 2022, at 8:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and at the time and place, when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 299-22.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refund for duplicate payments.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 301-22.
This is a resolution authorizing cancellation of taxes for block 218 lots 9, 20, and 21, and transfer of payment to block 218 lot 19.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right.
It is resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 34-2022 as introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance should be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on July 18th, 2022, at 8:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and at the time and place, when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 298-22.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 35-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 170 vehicles and traffic of the Code of the City of Hackensack to amend section 53 entitled Schedule Four Time-Limited Parking.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 301-22.
This is a resolution authorizing cancellation of taxes for block 218 lots 9, 20, and 21, and transfer of payment to block 218 lot 19.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 301-22.
This is a resolution authorizing cancellation of taxes for block 218 lots 9, 20, and 21, and transfer of payment to block 218 lot 19.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 301-22.
This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation as for NJSA 40A:4-87, NJDOT Local Aid Infrastructure Grant for the Summit Avenue-Pasake Street Intersection Project.
Hey, need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 302-22.
This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation as for NJSA 40A:4-87, 2022 Clean Communities Grant.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 303-22.
The resolution authorizing a order change order number one, a new Prince Concrete Construction for Low Dice Street Road Improvement Project, which was a CDV gym.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 303-22.
The resolution authorizing a order change order number one, a new Prince Concrete Construction for Low Dice Street Road Improvement Project, which was a CDV gym.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 301-22.
This is a resolution authorizing cancellation of taxes for block 218 lots 9, 20, and 21, and transfer of payment to block 218 lot 19.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 303-22.
The resolution authorizing a order change order number one, a new Prince Concrete Construction for Low Dice Street Road Improvement Project, which was a CDV gym.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 301-22.
This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation as for NJSA 40A:4-87, NJDOT Local Aid Infrastructure Grant for the Summit Avenue-Pasake Street Intersection Project.
Hey, need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 303-22.
The resolution authorizing a order change order number one, a new Prince Concrete Construction for Low Dice Street Road Improvement Project, which was a CDV gym.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 302-22.
This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation as for NJSA 40A:4-87, 2022 Clean Communities Grant.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 303-22.
The resolution authorizing a order change order number one, a new Prince Concrete Construction for Low Dice Street Road Improvement Project, which was a CDV gym.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus, aye.
All right. Resolution 303-22.
The resolution authorizing a order change order number one, a new Prince Concrete Construction for Low Dice Street Road Improvement Project, which was a CDV gym.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call? This is a resolution authorizing order change order number one, new Prince Concrete Construction for Low Dice Street Road Improvement Project which was a CDVG.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 304-22.
This is a resolution authorizing the award of state contracts for the purchase of a dispatch console for the Hackensack Fire Department.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 305-22.
This is a resolution authorizing award of gift contract for Clay Street Combined Sewer Separation Railroad Avenue to Park Street Contract Number Three.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 306-22.
This is a resolution authorizing award of contracts for engineering services for Summit Avenue Passaic Street Traffic Signal Improvements.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 307-22.
This is a resolution authorizing award of contracts to enable engineering associates for traffic signal improvements first in B Streets and First Street and Central Avenue.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 308-22.
This is a resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Does anybody have any conflicts on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. It's that one? So we'll pull that one out. Nobody else has a conflict? Okay.
Just three. So, the following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. Consent agenda items will be reflected in full in amendments including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolution 309-22 through 315-22 with the exception of 310-22. 309-22 is a resolution authorizing renewal of liquor licenses for the 2022-2023 license term. Resolution 311-22 is a resolution authorizing a leave of absence without pay for Olga Prisano, Keyboarding Clerk One for the Fire Department. Resolution 312-22 is a resolution authorizing the extension of Sandra J Newman, Keyboarding Clerk One, for the Health Department, leave of absence without pay for two weeks terminating on June 30, 2022. Resolution 313-22 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of request of qualifications for professional service to the City of Hackensack. Resolution 314-22 is a resolution authorizing approved time payout of $130,482.36 to Fire Deputy Chief John Barbaleano. Resolution 315-22 is a resolution authorizing the settlement of the workers' compensation matter filed by Georgia Van... Steve, help me out on this one. How do you pronounce that last name?
Van Vakidis.
Van Vakidis?
Van Vakidis. Van Vakidis?
Okay. Pending the New Jersey Division of Workers' Compensation Case Number 24134305.
Okay, that's it.
We need a motion.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And then we got Resolution 310-22. Resolution authorizing leave of absence without pay for Madalena Candela, Clerk One, in the Police Department.
Need a motion, please?
Over.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, with that, need a motion to open to the public, please?
Mayor, before we do, I just realized we omitted the typical closing session and everything, so I just want to make sure I don't forget that. We did have a closed executive session prior to the Cow meeting today starting at 5:30. We did talk about a number of ongoing litigations, including the Quadri case, the Salkin case, the Vasco's case, and other workers' compensation matter involving an employee named Delgado. I just want to put them on the record. Thank you.
Hey, motion to open to the public?
Over.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, aye. Deputy Mayor Conestino, aye. Councilmember Bataglia, aye. Councilmember Carroll, aye. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward. Give your name to the clerk.
Good evening, Carolyn Davis, Hackensack resident. I want to say thank you number one for the benches on Main Street. It's something I had asked for, for seniors, mid seniors, for anyone that's walking and his bench is all on Main Street, so thank you for that. Also, thank you for the serious business of taking care of our water problems, of trying to take care of them. So let me move quickly here. As a member of the work that we came to with a few questions back on April 5th, at a meeting on May 10th, the city manager read your answers. I just want to make it public that as part of that statement, and I know it's not from the city manager, it's from the mayor and council, but he just read them, part of that statement was that we were not going to do that that way anymore. Those answers were read at the very beginning of the meeting. I want to make known publicly that we never asked for any answers to be asked in any special way. We presented all of those questions on April 5th, expecting answers at the end of the meeting. You, mayor, without a vote from the council, closed that meeting, not giving a chance for those answers to be answered. On April 26th, we presented those same questions to each one of you written, again, expecting answers at the end of the meeting. That's what we gave to the beginning. Your response was, "I will email them to you," Reverend Davis. I never got an email. So on May 10th, when we came, the city manager read your responses and the first statement was that you will not do the answers in that way anymore, make it sound like we asked for something special. We never did. We came twice looking for answers at the end of the meeting. On that note, I do have one more clarification. One question, and we went back to that very first meeting, and I'm reading this exactly as we asked it. Residents had been told that they can contact developers, and I've had many conversations with you, Deputy Mayor, about this. We were told that we can contact them on that day. Who in City Hall do we contact? The city manager's office or redevelopment? If order to find out from them. Your response on May 10th was, "We cannot tell you or arrange meetings." That was not a question. We didn't ask you to arrange a meeting. We didn't ask for it to be done. We just said, "Can you tell us who we can contact?" So we could arrange our own meetings. So I wanted that clarification read public, because your response was not the question that we asked. We simply asked you, "Who could we contact? How do we contact? How do we get in touch with developers?" We never asked you to do that, because people know you can't do that. So I wanted to make that clarification. That's all we want to know. My message and my hope is that other developers will follow the... Follow what Gray Deverton has done, have three minutes, three seconds here. I must say, that group came out and reached out to us and met with us and talked with us and had a back and forth discussion. Not that we all came to an agreement, but I appreciate the fact that they respected what we were saying, they understood, and they called us and had a meeting and we had a discussion. I hope more developers take that into hand and realize they really owe it to the community.
Thank you, representatives. Next person, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dora Mae Davis, Hackensack. I too was at the April 1st meeting. And our question was on that night, whether you plans about the increased traffic that is going to happen in that small and busy area, talking about 123 Anderson Street, that site. Your response was, "Right now, the project is in its preliminary stages. You will take into consideration of how it will be designed and will take into the concerns of the residents of the area as you do all the development projects." Our reply to your response to that question is, as homeowners, any major change like one family to two family, we would like to make to our home, we have to notify our neighbors within a certain perimeter by registered receipt of our proposal, or may have the right to approve or disapprove. How about requiring developers to do the same? In order to fully appreciate the concerns of the residents, while this is still in the pending stages, you should, if you have not already, conducted a survey with the residents to hear their concerns about the traffic in the area and how it might affect them and also the effect on them. If walkings and want to mat are removed. Part two, how will this traffic affect where you live? You did not answer. The truth is, I don't believe any of you could honestly answer that, because I don't believe any of you live in this area, so it will not directly affect you. The equality of living will not directly be affected. That being said, before you decide for those whose lives will be affected, traffic steady or not, think about it being built around a corner from across the street from you. Think about how your lives might be affected. As leaders, you have to put yourself into the situations of those in your community. It is not just about developers telling you about what they can do for your community. You can tell developers who will not live here what you expect for your community. Thank you. We expect answers at the end of this evening.
Next player.
Deborah Kealan-Geddes, Hackensack. At the April 5th meeting, a resident said that his rent went up by $400 in one year. We asked, "Are you comfortable with the fact that landlords can increase rent at their free will? And if you knew about a state law which dictated a 4% yearly increase? Have you looked into whether there is such a state law?"
We'll wait to view.
Okay. We'll wait to view. And how is the city going to protect citizens from excessive rent increases? Your response, and I'll paraphrase, was that you're not aware of that specific situation that was described at the meeting, but if anybody feels that they're being unfairly... Their rent is being unfairly increased, they should go to seek legal services, to legal services in New Jersey. Okay. So, basically, with more investigation, I guess with the new buildings, there really is no recourse in these luxury buildings. And you can correct me if I'm wrong. For buildings over 30 years, have you investigated whether there is a law stating rent increases which are limited to 4%? In the city's ordinance, rent stabilization ordinance, it does say, and I think it should go in record for those who are renting, that 5%, that landlords are allowed a 5% increase if they provide heat to the rental unit. There, they can charge 4.5% where the tenant is obliged to pay for the heating of the rental unit. They can charge 4% for a qualified senior's tenant where the landlord provides heat, or 3%, 3.5% for a qualified senior tenant where the tenant is obliged to pay for the heating of the rental unit. I think that's very important information that people should know, so that, you know, they have a left to stand with their landlords. The second question I want to go into is why the citizens of Hackensack don't know who is on the zoning and planning board? Why are the members, along with the other advisory board members, not listed on the city's website? Basically, you said that they're all publicly appointed and their names appear on literally hundreds of agendas, minutes, and other documents available on the city's website. Anybody can find them readily. Well, currently, the only thing listed for each advisory board on the city's website are the meeting dates and the enabling ordinances. I'm almost done. The only board that lists their members is the Co-op condo board, and they list their legal liaison, the council's liaison, and the secretary's email contact. Kudos to them. Other than this board, there is very little information on any of the other boards. We need to do better. I looked at Maywood, Teaneck, and Inglewood Planning Board listings and other advisory boards, and at minimum, they have members' names listed and their terms. Maywood has emails for all of their members and for all professionals who represent the board, and Teaneck at least has separate emails to contact any of the boards. Teaneck also has appointing resolution numbers. The county seats advisory boards need to be much more transparent with who is serving on our advisory boards without having to dig into agendas and minutes. Residents should also be able to apply online to serve on boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, before we go forward, do you want to answer the...
Sure. So, a number of points there. First of all, there is no state rent control statute. It does not exist. There's no state ordinance or statute that says rents cannot be increased by 4% or 6% or anything like that. State law does permit municipalities to adopt a rent stabilization ordinance or a rent control ordinance within certain limitations, and I think the former councilwoman referenced one of them, which is that newer buildings for a period of up to 30 years cannot lawfully be subject to rent control under any circumstances. And I'll also point out, you know, during COVID, there were a lot of executive orders during the public health emergency that changed a lot of things around, but the public health emergency no longer exists. In fact, Hackensack is one of only about 20% or less of municipalities in New Jersey that actually have any form of rent control or rent stabilization. The vast majority of towns and cities in New Jersey do not. With respect to the ordinance itself, I mean, there are provisions that the council can and I believe has been starting to look at regarding whether the existing regulatory framework makes sense or whether some adjustments need to be made. With respect to the fact that there is no rent control statewide in New Jersey, there there is a provision, and I referenced this before, that says rent increases cannot be what is termed unconscionable. And some of the descriptions that I've heard, and again, we've heard them sort of anecdotally at the council. I don't think we really receive any sort of documentation or any sort of full details of what's happened with anyone's individual case. But if a rent increase is what is termed unconscionable, a tenant does have the legal right to withhold that rent increase. They still would have to pay their rent and they would probably have to pay a reasonable increase. But say, if a landlord were to increase rent 20% and there was a belief it was unconscionable, they could avail themselves of that statute, say this rent increase is unconscionable, I'm not going to pay it. And then there would have to be a court, a landlord tenant court proceeding to determine if the landlord didn't back down. So that is why I mentioned a conversation with somebody in that circumstance with New Jersey Legal Services could probably very well guide them as to how to make that sort of claim in the safest possible manner. But that does exist in the law. And that's really the limits of what New Jersey state law provides for. And to my knowledge, I do not believe there's any legislative activity that has gotten any traction with respect to a statewide rent control law because the legislature has determined that it's best left up to individual municipalities. And as I said, Hackensack has an ordinance. As I said, approximately 100 other municipalities, to my knowledge, have them in one form or another. You know, I know Montclair was referenced. My hometown of Hoboken had one. I actually did some work on the rent board there. You know, there are other towns that do and other towns that don't.
Thank you, sir. Next question from the audience, please.
Bridget, City of Hackensack. One of the questions that was asked was about the master plan of 2009, and it was about affordable housing. I pulled up 2001 and 2009. And even though it did not say affordable housing within, it did construct to say that several redevelopment projects, roughly 500 units of new multifamily houses have been approved in the downtown area. So if multifamily housing was to be in the downtown area, that would probably need to be affordable. And that was in 2009. So we also had where they said that the housing plan element, the city's housing plan and Fair Share Plan should be revised to address the latest COA recommendations and rules and upon the completion and evaluation, COA. It should be formally decided. If you leave COA's jurisdiction, the affordable housing activity within the city would be monitored. So my thing here is downtown was to have affordable housing in it. You guys just changed the trajectory of it in your redevelopment or your re-amendment of the affordable housing in your master plan. We need to get master plan. So that question, that answer, that was given was not the truth. And that is on the next.
Next person from the audience, please.
They're from Hackensack. This question is to city council member other than John and Kathy. You know, Stephanie, Leo, and Gerard Jerome, we never hear from you or issues that's really affecting the community. No, I don't, you know, I think, well, I know, I personally don't want to hear about forcing renovations. I want to hear about the things, housing, affordable housing. You guys vote on these things, but yet we don't, never hear you say anything. I know you're allowed to say something. So start responding so the community can get a hold of it, the full count, not just John and Kathy. So we're looking forward to hearing from you. Let us know what you personally think, you know? I think that will be better for the community. We get to hear your voices or issue. Thank you.
Next person from the audience, please.
Hello, my name is Paccham Matiwalo. I'm from 29 Wysocki Place, representing Palmir Express. So our taxes have been raised from $44,000 to $67,000 and without us knowing about it. We never got a mail notification and we checked online prior April 30th also for any updates on what was going on and we got nothing. The only mail we actually got was from our neighbor, which was from 19 Wysocki Place. On the CO, the address was of 19 Wysocki Place and we requested that they change the CO address from 19 to 29 almost five, six months back.
So you're 20 on it?
Yes, we're 29. And the address initially showed there almost 19 Wysocki on CO. And we got no notifications. And supposedly, the inspector came in and tried to get an inspection done. And he said we've met an employee. We have no employee at the company. It's a family-run business. So there's me and my father who are working there. And he just raised the taxes. And based on the value of the property from sales, it was on September 24, 2021, we purchased the property.
Right.
So after that...
So you're thinking they might have made a wrong address, made an error. So here, city manager's just going to give you a card underneath. He's going to give you a business card, right? Tomorrow, you're going to reach out to him and he'll, well, he'll probably speak as a tax assessor or the tax collector, one or the other?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so the inspection happened also apparently, but I don't know which property you inspected.
Yeah, because that doesn't sound right, so.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Let's, let them figure it out. Be easier to do it that way.
All right, I appreciate it. That should be it.
Thank you. Next person from the audience, please.
Hi, somebody from Hackensack. Before I get to the work groups question, did I hear the city attorney say that the rent stabilization will not or does not apply to the debt here baited apartments? Is that what you said?
Is that your question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So yes, so there was a statute passed in 1987 and reviewed and renewed and made permanent after that by the New Jersey Legislature that essentially, as I said before, towns can choose whether to have rent control, rent stabilization, or not. And what the legislature said is, if you want to have rent stabilization, you must exempt new buildings. You can't put them under your rent control ordinance for a period of up to 30 years. It's not always 30 years, but that's sort of the default for most of these buildings. And the legislature, when they passed this law, they said, there is a housing crisis. I mean, I don't think anybody can deny that in terms of being built. And the legislature, in its wisdom, felt that if these buildings could be put under rent control by a municipality within that period of time, developers would be afraid to build because when you have rent control, it limits the return that you can down a building. And more importantly, it affects the ability of a building to get financing, right? Because if a builder's going to get a mortgage to build a building, you know, they're going to present revenue estimates based upon the rents. And if rent control comes into place, then those rents may be limited. They may not be able to pay back their lenders. Again, I'm not saying this. This is what the New Jersey Legislature said. So they said there should be a period of time where builders know, under no circumstances, that their development will be placed under rent control. And so no town can put a rent control ordinance that conflicts with those provisions of the statute. So for these new buildings, even if the council were to want to put a building that was built in 2012 under a rent control or rent stabilization ordinance, if it were to do so, the building owner would be able to file a lawsuit, cite that statute, then a court would strike down the city's decision to do that. So there are limits on what this governing body can legislate, and that's one of them.
I will add to this, though. There's some things we are looking into. In other words, if, say that building had a 30-year mortgage, and I think that's probably where the 30-year number comes from because that's most often the length of the mortgage, okay? If that building's paid off within 20 years, once that building's paid off, they can go under rent control. And that's some of the things we're going to be looking at. But my guess is that real estate people are pretty sure he's going to refinance that building while rates are low. And as long as it's under financial, right, obligation, you can institute rent control. So if I pay my building off for 20 years and they're coming after for rent control, as a business person, I'm going out to refinance. So then I can hook the loan by rent. That's just business. It's not, I'm not saying it's right, not saying anything. But that's what the businessman is going to do. And we can't control that. That's the problem. But we aren't looking into any units that are past their financial obligation and paid off their mortgage. And they're free and clear. They did it in 10 years. They should be obligated for rent control. So that's, we're getting that low-hanging fruit. That's what we're going to go after right away.
Okay, well, it's good to hear that. At least you're looking into it.
Yeah, no, it was brought up and let's see what's out there. Because, to be honest, we really don't know. It's hard to figure out the financial end of the narrative, you know, because we don't have all that information.
From the work groups, my question is regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Is suburban engineers being paid out of this fund? And if yes, are they doing affordable housing? That's the question.
What was the question?
They're wondering if suburban engineering has been paid out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
No. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund may pay for our affordable housing attorney and it may pay for our affordable housing planner, which is in the spending plan. But no, it won't pay for an engineer.
Oh, all right.
Thank you. Next person from the public.
Good evening. I'm the host, Hackensack. I'm just curious to know, I think I've asked this question before. Are we right now making any money of the buildings that we have developed? Are the AD paying us? And if they are, how much have we made so far? And what is that money being used for? Are we using it for the flooding, the plumbing that we're doing in the city? What exactly and how much have we made? And is it, are we 75% full? I know the different buildings probably have different numbers of capacity. Once they reach a certain capacity, they have to start paying. But how full are the buildings? How much are we making from them? And where is that money being spent?
Before you...
Is that maybe your question?
Yeah, that's it.
All right, so again, we reduce this increases. And remember, when they pay the money, they pay each year. So once they start, it continues to go into their pilot.
Okay.
So if we look at this year in particular, and Jim is here, I'm trying to remember. This year, I think pilot money was around $2.4 million. Okay, so this year, in this particular year, we received about $2.4 million in pilot money. Now, the way things work, and I think we talked about this once before, is when you look at Jim's budget, okay, there's something called appropriation. So that's all the expenses that the city has. And there's something called revenue. And that's all the money that comes into the city. So if you go online and you look at the budget, if you look at the revenue sheet, you will see the addresses of these particular buildings and exactly how much money they contributed this year towards the budget. Now, Jim can't take that money specifically and say, oh, I'm going to take this money and I'm going to put this towards the sewer work specifically. Okay, what happens is all of the expenses, so everything that's in the plan and the appropriations, here's what we're going to spend this year. All of that has to be paid somehow. And that's paid by all of the revenue that comes in. So what pieces of that revenue are the pilot money? And first, when you first started, there's one building. So each year, as the buildings come on board, we're seeing more and more of that money come to the city and be used against the expenses in the city for that year, which in essence lowers your tax rates, lowers the tax levy is basically, enables us to do more, like sewer work, like court work, because you can do that without specifically charging our taxpayers and raising the tax rate to do it. And that was a big part of the plan, is how do we bring more revenue into the city? We knew the city needed a lot of work. It had been neglected for many, many years. And how do we do that without killing our taxpayers? And the only way we could think of to do it was to bring more money into the city. And so that's kind of why this whole process or where this whole process is going. Ready to answer your question?
Mostly, yes. Is this our first year earning money?
No, no, we've been doing this since the first building opened.
2016 was the first.
2016, the first building opened. So each, this year, of course, has a few more. So as they open, we keep adding them to the list, right? As they open and populate.
And do we know are any of our buildings to capacity or at that 75% mark?
No, no, no. I think of the nine of the 10 are at 95%.
Yes.
Nine of the 10 are at 95% or more leased, which is usually, you're left, usually plan on a 5% dating some turnover. So I think nine of the 10 are at 95%. And the newest one, the newest one on the corner of, maybe the immersive, the brick? I just spoke to him, he's at 56% already. And he just opened at Christmas, which wasn't a great time to open. So they're already at 56%. So the others are all maintaining at 95% or rather than 75%. And they all lease pretty much ahead of schedule. So Walton's plan, so there is a market for housing and leasing opportunities.
This is the best rental market right now in real estate?
Good thing for the city, of course. We're able to get that revenue in as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Can I just ask a question? What happens when buildings change name? Like say if someone sold the building? Because I know that the Bank of America building was sold.
They're obligated to keep their pilot contract and everything stays.
As long as it's approved.
As long as it's approved by the city. They have to have that approval from us in order to move forward with a sale.
So it's a financially secure institution?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, financially secure, so we have confidence that they're going to be able to pay us, okay? So, and that's primarily if they're able to purchase it, they're financially secure at that point. And then the pilot, we transfer and it burns.
Into the camera, or the back.
But it doesn't change the pilot?
No, it does not. No, it does not.
Very good.
I'm sorry, we're not supposed to answer to the crowd.
That's all right.
No, I'm sorry. I just needed to add.
Motion too close to the public.
Voicemail.
Vocal?
Councilmember Robert Rivera?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Constrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Batavia?
Aye.
Councilmember Cameron?
Aye.
All right, anybody, mostly close. Stephanie, anybody, would you like to speak?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I just wanted to start to do a quick thank yous. Thank you first to Kathy and Councilwoman Gattala for that great video. You know, just a couple Sundays ago, I was in the yard and I took, I did the app and I was counting how many planes are coming over. And I reached my 30 plane max at 25 minutes. So 30 large planes. And it's funny because you're there and you're being inconvenienced. You're hearing how loud, but it's not so you really pay attention. And the kids are like, oh my God, that is, that's a huge plane that's going over. So I think sometimes if you're, you know, you're hearing it, you're being inconvenienced, but you're really not paying attention to it, you don't realize how often and how loud and the severity of it is. So if anyone else can get that app on their phone, I think a Nixle was sent out with the information. It's definitely interesting and, you know, eye-opening to keep track of. Thank you to Mr. Gelber and Hackensack Elks and the Little Library Program. There is a lot of those hello boxes all over. If anyone's been driving around the city, they're really cute. We have one at our neighbor's house and it's just nice to see, you know, hopefully the nice weather and during summer, people could really appreciate it and take advantage of it. A question was asked about my thoughts on the redevelopment. And as a mom of three children, I think of it as a quality of life initiative. As, you know, just kind of came up before, the redevelopment's bringing in money. And I know certain people don't care about rec and parks, but I do. Down there at the fields, every day coaching softball. My husband's coaching baseball and I'm running wrestling. And we saw what these kids didn't have compared to other towns. And my thought is, why don't our children deserve the best that other towns deserve? Why don't they have those facilities? Why are they stuck on a field that floods all the time and they can't play? Why is our numbers down? Why aren't we as competitive as other towns? It's not fair to them. It's not fair. So when I look at redevelopment, I'm looking at is what can we use redevelopment to our advantage for our kids in our city? That's how I view redevelopment as a quality of life. Why don't our kids have a nice downtown to go to? Why can't they go with their friends after school and grab a bite to eat in a safe environment? All those things are what redevelopment is to me. So that's my thoughts. And if we're going to use that to help our kids and our city, that's what I think we should do. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
A couple of the questions that came up tonight, I feel maybe that I should answer. The first one about the master plan. The master plan does not call for any specific area to have affordable housing. That's not true. It says, of course, that there is support for affordable housing.[1691.62] It does not say it belongs on the downtown. It does not say it belongs in the main street. It says that, yes, the city will provide affordable housing. What the city has done is actually worked together with their share to have an affordable housing settlement, an affordable housing plan. And in that plan, there's actually specific areas where you must build affordable housing as part of your building. And there's three of those areas throughout the city. And this is, again, this is recent, we're, we're waiting. When development occurs there, it will be, uh, they cannot contribute to the trust fund. They must actually build those particular units. City works very hard to get the six units that are proposed over in Latte that will satisfy our requirement with affordable housing. And we have that stuff. You know, you folks mentioned Greater Bergen. You know, we continue to pursue that and we had talked about that location with you guys for, for quite a long time. We discussed it as a council and in the meeting, um, in the meetings. And, you know, that will be a hundred percent affordable. I'll, I'll kind of wind into Anderson Street discussion. Um, you know, the Anderson Street project, I'm going to be probably revealing some information. I'm sure it's okay, Albert, at this point. I mean, right now, I really don't, we really don't think that that project is going to move forward right now at this point. Prior to that, prior to us having that information, many of the things that you folks bring up to us at the, at the meetings are things that were written in the city's plan. We just can't openly just board what comes to our information. Did absolutely want Walgreens to stay there. And in fact, the city was requiring affordable housing to be built there as part of it as well. The developer could not financially make it come to be at this point in time. No reason to think that maybe just go out and get better financing and raise his head again and raise his hand to look into it. But at this point, that project is, is kind of on hold and not, hasn't moved any point forward from where we are. But to address some of the questions, and I know I've given this information before. As far as, first of all, as far as notice of requirements, when, when a project moves to the planning board, and that's where the public input is required, and that's the most important place you can go to have your input heard and to have your input documented. Because everything that's spoken at those planning board meetings is, is taken by a reporter and those minutes and, and those comments are all saved in part of the record. So if notice is required, the notice to the extent of where it's required for that building will absolutely be done, so people will know when that, when that site plan approval will be being presented. Traffic studies are a big part of that plan, of the planning board and the planning board package. And that's when, if you have questions, you're hearing the professionals. You're hearing the folks that actually did the traffic studies. You're hearing the report from our own police officers. So that is the, that is the, uh, public invitation to have discourse about these projects. And that's where your interest lies. Those, those are the meetings that you really should be attending and, and participating in. I think that's it for the questions that, that I thought I should answer. Um, alright, a couple of things on the agenda. I always like to just go over a little bit some of the highlights. The big things that are on the agenda tonight. Um, one was the bond ordinance for thirteen and a half million dollars. This is, again, the, the, what we call the Clay Street Sewer Project. You know, we have the Clay Street area, the Anderson Street area and the Green Street area. We kind of just refer to it in that way. You know, this is the thing that now finally is got to go under the railroad and get to the west side of the railroad. So this is something we've been waiting for. Um, and this bond ordinance, again, had the first hearing tonight. Of the thirteen and a half million, we're anticipating getting five million of that loan forgiveness. So that's great. So that's, you know, actually free money for us to, to move forward with that project. Uh, something else on here who is important is we hear lots of complaints at the meetings about trying to make a left turn on the corner of the St. and Summit. I know I have that too, because that's my usual way home. You know, so tonight we awarded money towards a study to look at, you know, how can we handle that? How can we fix that problem? Unfortunately, that's a narrow intersection, you know, to make a left turn only there doesn't seem to go. Tonight, we approved, um, money to, to do a study there. Um, a couple of things that we discussed, I think, of also of importance at the community as a whole, for those of you that weren't here. One, I know we've talked again frequently about, um, the award we got to Anderson Street to, we got a hundred twenty-five thousand a year for five years to make improvements. Um, that the folks that are working towards that gave a lovely presentation. The folks, and you can watch it online if you're interested. I think they had great ideas, you know, ways of making some new ventures, new receptacles, uh, better flowers, definitely better crosswalks for safety. I think this first year, the project they picked were, were right on doing, you know, some extra stuff in those ports, like putting some of the, you know, the tables where you can play chess and checkers. I think, um, the things they're suggesting is going to make a nice difference in Anderson Street. Stephanie referred to the video, um, you can, I, I think, we'll put it online, Frank, right?
Yes, I need to, right.
Put the link on the website if it's, is it there?
Yep.
Okay, there'll be a link to a video. You know, the council has been working for years and I've been the, the person that attends the meetings at Teterboro Airport, trying to get this new flight path used. And even though it's published, it hasn't been used with much frequency. So I've been in, in contact with the users group where the operators are holding meetings. And they suggested that if I made a video, kind of begging them to get their pilots to use this alternate flight path, they would play it at their meetings. So, um, we just finished that up last week and, uh, it, it'll be, it's on the website for anybody that wants to see it. It's just kind of informational and, you know, also just shows, we're not giving up this fight. And thanks to many of the people in town that sent us videos of the planes flying low, sent us pictures of the planes flying low and logged them, you know, really, really thanks so much because that's the information we need to continue this fight. Lastly, I'm just going to say, probably one of the top ten moments in my life this week at the Hackensack High School graduation. I mean, it was as lovely graduation as it always is and I was so blessed to be able to actually give my granddaughter her diploma. And I'll tell you, as a grandma, it was right up there, top ten moment. I mean, it was just, I, it just felt so good. And, um, it was a wonderful ceremony, we had five hundred and twenty graduates, lots of excitement. You know, lots of looking forward and it really uplifted me going to these graduations. So again, thanks everyone. I know the police were on duty because, you know, we had a lot of these swatting calls. Everyone from the city, uh, please thank them, Benny. They did a great job. Everything ran smoothly. But I will add, two to four, I can't tell you how many planes flew over that graduation. You know, and, and we were sitting there and it was right, Jerry was with them, right? One right after the other, you know, and it, it was a shame. You know, it was when the chorus was singing, I mean, you're drowned out with these, with these planes. So then you keep fighting, right, guys? Because I'm not going to give up on this and I appreciate your support. Have a good night and thank you for coming.
Mr. Bataglia.
Yeah, you're on that way.
Do I forget to sleep, Leo? Do I forget to sleep?
I was on time.
I know, I know.
Well, from the beginning of this administration, we divided like the issues, like you can handle this, you can handle something else. My main thing, my from the beginning with IPW, police, uh, to try to get, to pay our streets that are really difficult and that's what I've been doing. It's more like I try to work from the issues, you know? Uh, I try to do the best I can and I am a person that if you guys couldn't talk to me I have every feeling, so you want to, you want to go to a meeting and, and give you all the answers to any issue, I would do my time. But, uh, my main concern is the, the city, the state of the city, the parks. And right now, we are here that we continue working with a project about Johnson Park. We continue looking at the situation with State Park. Uh, the diet free, when I get paid maybe by Friday, Camden Street. And we have some money to maybe do secondly through the next big months. And we try to put radar controls to try to get the people to redo the streets of the city of Hackensack. We got safety device, devices at different corners, stop sign, we added these uh, to alert people when they're cruising the street. So the bottom line, we try to do the best we can. We're not perfect, but we try to do the best. Thank you, Eric, for coming. Have a good night.
So, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Ms. Rucker for her kind words about June teeth. Uh, now I'd like to bring up, um, the last meeting that we had. I'd like to apologize to the citizens of Hackensack that while I was giving my response to the individuals that addressed me at the last city council meeting, there was a brief apparatus from the audience. Then the phrase, "You are so disconnected from the community," was directed towards me at the last city council meeting. Until the name-calling, shout-outs from the audience and grandstanding at the podium, I will be disconnected from those individuals that continue that behavior. Meeting, I will no longer respond to them. Now, a special thanks goes out to the city employees, local groups and the community leaders responsible for making June teeth celebration a wonderful event. I have received nothing but positive comments about the event. And it goes to show that when the city, local groups and community leaders work together, great things can happen. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, get home safe, God bless. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Karen. I think most of our questions have been answered. I just wanted to go back, one, one, I didn't came back. I have no doubt the young man who said his rent was raised at the Meridian Building had a rent increase. My point is, and, and Steve kind of alluded to it, because I heard four hundred and six hundred in one night already on his rent increase, right? So that's a two hundred dollar. But the other young lady said six.
Oh.
Okay, so we had a four and a six. And, and I understand your frustrations. If somebody says, hey, they raised my rent four hundred, in your heart, you probably believe them. But we don't know that for facts until we see some documentation, alright? So I need, I need to see some documentation. And I would even go and speak with the owner saying, hey, that's a little steep, alright? But I got a four, I got a six, there could be a two in there. I need a real number, alright?
The gentleman stood there, I mean, you gave the number.
I understand, I understand that. I understand that, but I, I need to see in black and white a rent increase. I just can't go on his word. I can't.
But which were really the ones?
He, he told us he lived on ninety-four State Street, which is the, the first building to go up.
That was the first building? Yeah.
Uh, uh, State Street, sorry. States, ninety-four State. So, yeah, like I said, I have no doubt he had a rent increase. I just want to know what the real amount is so I can figure out what the parameters are and where he possibly could be on a rent increase. Earlier tonight, the gentleman that comes all the time, who's always involved in pedestrian safety and safety in general, brought up something which we all should be thinking about right now is school safety and our kids. Our kids are the future of, of the world, not just this country. And I don't care what side of the fence you're on. I don't care whether you like guns, I don't care whether you love guns, alright? Our schools are not safe because they're too easily accessible. At nine eleven, this country, after we got invaded by those planes coming in and taking out our buildings and our, our capital and going down in the field in Pennsylvania, we went to such extremes to make this country safe. Millions, billions of dollars. Millions and millions just on plane cockpits so nobody could get in, alright? You fix the things you can fix first to stop the carnage. And we have, Hackensack High School has five entrances that you could probably get in at any given time. How could you possibly protect children when you have that? You can't. And that's across schools all over the world. And I know it's going to be a hardship and I know it's going to cost money. But these are our kids, alright? And again, I don't care if you love guns, I don't care if you hate guns. That's not the issue here. The issue is the schools themselves aren't safe. Anybody could get in and commit a sexual assault on a child, let's shoot them. It's not right for people to just be able to walk into schools and have their, their way with our children. It's not right. And, uh, I, for one, I'm, I'm sick and tired of it because it's become a political game. Instead of taking care of the issue, we're fighting politics. This group doesn't like guns, this group likes guns. And that's, all it's going to do is have fighting for two or three years and the schools are still going to be unsafe. The first thing you do is fix the problem. You can't let them in our schools. More resource officers, more cops. I'm more than happy to have a tax increase to pay for more police to tend their children. And I'm sure most of the people in this room feel the same way. So, um, we get to have some great grant money coming tonight, um, which is always great. And the planes, you know, it's, I live right in a flight, you guys all live in a flight that, do I think? It, it's just getting, especially this time of year, on a Sunday afternoon, it's the worst. Three o'clock to eight o'clock. It's like all these rich people in their corporate jets are coming, flying back wherever to get back to, uh, Bourbon County. And it's, it's brutal. It's like every forty-five seconds is a, a low-flying jet coming over your house. You can't even have your windows open and watch television, so it's very annoying. So thank you for doing the video and hopefully, and you know what? We might, we might get to the point where we come to you guys and people watching on television and say, you know what? Maybe it's time to go down to Teterboro with a couple hundred people and say, hey, enough is enough, guys, alright? We need the quality of life here. This is just nuts. So, uh, when that time comes, we'll be reaching out to the public because I don't know, the debt jets and all these other companies out there, you know, I don't, they probably don't take us seriously, so, you know, we might have to show them a little different. But with that, everybody have a great night, get home safe.